I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Go ahead and do a call to order. Director Ginny Braunwald, she's absent tonight. A vote to.
Want us to do it now? I move to excuse Ginny.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Director Rob Perkins.
Here.
Director Julie Boca-Negre.
Here.
Director Rachel Rogers.
Yeah.
Superintendent Mike Merlino.
Here.
Oh, there he is.
I'm here.
And Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll. Right, great. Let's see here, next up, we have a land acknowledgement that Director Perkins will read to us.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kowals tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Next up, we need to adopt tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? We have the board's consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of tonight's board consent agenda?
Move the approval of tonight's board's consent agenda as presented.
By the second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Hey, next up. I know, I just want to get to where we are on. So do we have the board or the superintendent's consent agenda? Do I have approval or have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent?
I move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda as presented. All in favor? Hi.
Okay. Okay. Lot of little individual items on here. So next up, we do have the superintendent update from Merlino.
Yep, I've got a few things I wanted to share. The first, I've shared some information last week, the CDC put out new guidance on returning to school. And I think the first thing to remember is kind of throughout the pandemic, the CDC has put out guidance, but it's our state, Washington State Department of Health, that ends up determining what those guidelines and the guidance is going to be for all school districts in the state of Washington. So even though the CDC put their information out, we still have to kind of wait to see how the Department of Health is going to handle that. Now, last week Superintendent Reichdahl put out an email that had the following takeaways prior to the updated guidance from the State Department of Health. The first is the Department of Health released updates to their K-12 guidance, which allows fully vaccinated staff to remove face coverings indoors when students are not present. So that's one change that's already in place. The new Department of Health guidance also allows students and staff, regardless of vaccination status, to remove face coverings while they're outdoors. So that's another one that is in place at this time. They still encourage folks to maintain the physical distancing space, and unvaccinated individuals are encouraged to wear masks still. Now, where this kind of stands with the State Department of Health, we expect in the next week or two for them to receive, or not receive, but put out their updated guidance, what their plans are for the fall. Yesterday, there was a, you know, throughout the pandemic, we've had calls with Clark County Chiefs, with Dr. Melnick. So there was discussion yesterday around the masking requirements. And I will say that the local districts are supporting an effort to provide the recommendation that masks be voluntary for students. That was shared with Superintendent Reichdahl, that was shared with Dr. Melnick, so that that could be brought forward both through the Department of Health and also through the Governor's Office. So that's, that's kind of the feeling of the districts. That, you know, we just don't know exactly what's going to happen until we get to the point to see the actual guidance coming out. So I think we're hopeful that we're going to have more flexibility, but at this point, we're still kind of in a holding pattern. The second thing I would mention is we continue to work with a couple of local folks, Doug Green, a local entrepreneur, and John Gerard, owner of Quail Homes, on a skilled trade center at Evergreen High School. Chief Schools Officer Brian Grinstad and our CTE Director Dustin Birmingham met with those folks on Monday, starting to work on what an MOU might look like in terms of that program, which would be basically building, constructing a building that would kind of work in concert with the construction and math program that we have at Evergreen, but allow for us to build tiny homes on site and then really promote the skilled trades for our kids. We've talked about this a few times, but I believe at our first work meeting in August, workshop, we'll have Brian and Justin Tom outline more of that and possibly even Doug Green and John Gerard with that as well. I think we also, you know, with Bill Omen, who'd been part of this conversation also when he was in Evergreen, now him going to Vancouver and Jeff being, Jeff Snell, the new Superintendent of Vancouver, I think that there is some opportunity potentially for partnership with them on this project as well. But I just wanted to update, we continue to move forward on that. But we will have more conversations in our first workshop in August, so we can get more questions that you might have answered or just give you more information around the project and what the thinking is on that. I would also mention that we want to bring some updated options around the SRO program. You know, we talked at a meeting, I think a few board meetings ago, you all shared your thoughts around that. I, I think that we have not necessarily options, but SRO, these liaisons, that, that type of thing, and want to have more conversation about that, bring that back to you in early August as well. And then the final thing I would mention is we started, you know, we obviously got a ton of construction projects going on. We continue to work at Marian, continue to work at Ellsworth, continue to work on our, our site. I'm, my understanding is, I'm pretty sure this is our last board meeting in the room that you are currently in. We've started moving into the new ASC or the new district office. The first floor moved in the week of the 28th, the second floor has started moving in this week. We still have contractors on site, finishing touches, furniture preparations, but it's really going to be a fantastic facility and really excited for our first board meeting. The boardroom is quite nice and very impressive. I think you're all going to really enjoy the opportunity to participate in meetings there and, and we're real excited about that. And then, of course, once we get our third floor moved in, which is two weeks, we will start the demolition of the facilities where you're at now so that we have the opportunity to, so that we have the opportunity to start our construction, reconstruction of Burton Elementary. So a lot of stuff going on this summer and with that, that's all I have to add right now.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, when do you think everybody will be moved in? By mid-August or the end of this month?
Yeah, the, the second floor is this week and then it's two weeks. So the week of the, I guess, what's it, the 12th? And then the la, the third floor starts the week of the 26th. So it will be, you know, everybody will be up there by early August. I know, you know, Sue knows better in terms of what needs to happen at the existing site, but my understanding is our first meeting in August, our first board meeting will be in the new boardroom at the new facility. And we should have everybody out definitely by the beginning of August.
Mike, this is Vic. Do you know if we can get the latest information on the, on the SROs ahead of time before our next, before the workshop?
Yes.
So that we have time to.
Definitely. Yeah, definitely. I mean, the, the, basically the information, the Clark County Sheriff's, remember when we met, there, there was some conversation about the opportunity for us to potentially fully fund if we chose to do so. I don't think we chose to do so at that time, but even if we had, that option was removed from the table. So in the city, if we were even inclined to continue with the contract, that would be pushed quite a ways out. So really, yeah, it, it will be more kind of the thoughts around how do we kind of just have a conversation? How do we communicate with the police? Yeah, definitely, you'll have this, you'll have that information ahead of the workshop.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, next up, oh, is the budget update. Mike, are you giving the budget update tonight?
Yeah, I'll do, this will be probably one of my last ones. I see, I think I saw Jeff in the audience today. Back up her head there, actually, there she is waving. So yeah, the, the budget update, because we are July, we're basically at this point in time just kind of wrapping up this year, the 2021 school year and working on the 2122 budget. The work continues on the 2122 budget. We will, by late this month, have those documents finalized, working on them currently. Lori's working to schedule meetings with the board and myself and Jennifer so we can have deeper conversations about next year's budget when we are back here in late July, early August, before the board meeting, probably early August before the board meeting, first one. But, you know, I mean, this year, 2021, I would just say, you know, it was obviously just a challenging year with the enrollment impact, with the reductions in staff, the furloughs that we had, and then kind of very late in the year, learning that we had the SRO funds, one, two, and three certainly has helped us get through this year. I think that our ending fund balances here will be about a break even with where we started the year. And then honestly, all our work at this point is just kind of being put into the budget for 2122. And like I said, we'll have that finalized and have those conversations with you, with you all in early August. That's really all there is going on with the budget right now.
Mike, I did want to give a reminder that the board has requested that we receive kind of a breakdown of the things, budget items that have been attached to the COVID relief money, so we know what that money's being used for and have an accounting of that, please.
Yeah, correct. We have that information and we'll share that when we have the meetings individually with you before the full meeting, but we can also do it at the full meeting. And we actually had a public records request from a citizen on the amounts and how we've used the money as well. So definitely, we will have that information. We have it already.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep.
Our next up is our time for citizen comments. This is a time where citizens may direct comments to the board that are not currently on the board agenda for tonight's agenda, because that's where we would talk about those items, and are not legal in nature nor are they personnel in nature. We bar board times to three minutes so that we can ensure everybody gets a chance to speak. And I will call up the first person, Karen Mullenex. And make sure you address the board.
I lead custodian at Ridgfield High School. I also live and pay taxes right here in Vancouver. I worked for ABM Onsite Services since 2000. I'm to the high school in 2009, 12 years ago. I'm a proud member of SEIU Local 49. I'm here tonight to ask for your support for my coworkers and I as we start the contract bargaining process with ABM. Work is extremely hard to provide a clean, healthy, and secure environment for the students and staff, as well as community members during and after school, especially during the COVID pandemic. I lead a crew of coworkers and have a custodial run. Responsible for the 300 and part of the 400 wing, consisting of nine classrooms, restrooms, halls, a main gym, auditorium, gang restrooms, team restrooms, door glass entries, and a couple of small offices. Also help set up for special events, help at the other schools if needed, and do training of new employees. At end of shift, I'm responsible for making sure campus is locked and secure. I've developed a strong relationship with the staff and would like to continue my work here for years to come. I take pride in knowing that I make a difference in what I do after getting thanks from staff, students. However, the custodians in this district earn less wages than other custodians in their comparable pay to other districts who do the same. Ask you support us in our efforts to gain higher wages and affordable healthcare by asking ABM Onsite Services to provide a fair wage increase that will keep up with the cost of living, affordable healthcare that will keep us well so that we can. They're concerned that without direction from Evergreen Public Schools, ABM Janitorial may choose to offer us few or no wage increases so that we fall behind the cost of living, and they may choose to make cuts to our healthcare. Evergreen Public Schools has received nearly $64 million in COVID relief from the federal government. Ridgfield Public School District has received $2 million in COVID relief from the federal government. We understand there are many demands on the budget that you have to consider best in us because we invest so much of our hard work and pride in our schools. Send a letter to ABM saying that you will cover the cost of the fair contract with us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Karen. Next up is Melinda. I'm going to pronounce your last name. Okay, great. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Siddiqui. I am one of the many voices of the custodians that work in our public schools on behalf of ABM. My coworkers and I are always striving for the best in our school. We are here every day, work late, and if we need to, we work overtime in order to continue and to provide a clean, safe environment. I work in the evening shift at Hila High School. I have been at Hila for five years, but I have been with the ABM School District for 14. The work at these schools is very challenging and very labor intensive. Even though our work is hectic and most recently dangerous because of the COVID-19, we continue to show up for our schools and protect the students and staff that fill them. As our union enters collective bargaining and as I sit at the table with my fellow coworkers, we would like to see fair wages, continued excellent healthcare, a working environment without bullying or harassment, and flexibility around coming to work in a safe driving condition when it snows. My coworkers and I would like to be recognized for our work. Our quest above are a way to show to you as elected officials that you care about us being custodians. I have understood that EPS has received nearly $64 million in COVID relief from the federal government. The school board has a lot on their minds, so it's where the money is going to go. But all I ask is that you please invest in us because we have invested and continue to invest our time and in our students, staff, and schools. One of my concerns is that ABM will try not to give us a fair wage increase and they will attempt to cut our healthcare altogether. Please let them know that you will cover the cost of the contract so that we can continue to provide for our schools. Please send and sign a certified letter to ABM and to move them to give in, give us a good contract that we deserve. We want to continue to do the work in our public schools and we want to see that get recognized. Thank you for your time and fair consideration. I look forward to more years in Evergreen Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Next up is Terry Griner. Here, okay, thank you.
Terry Griner, I've been a daily custodian and I'm a sub-custodian now for over 17 years. I'm a proud member of SEIU and a proud part of the, of the Evergreen education community. I'm honored to work with the kids and see them grow and graduate. I take pride in my relationship with the staff and administrators. I work extremely hard to provide a clean and secure environment where teachers can excel and students thrive. As a daily, I'm responsible for a lot of responsibilities. I'm responsible for all areas of the school, setting up for special events, and now COVID-19. We are about to head into the bargaining contract with ABM Janitorial and the former wage increase last time just isn't enough these days. Average custodian only makes 1447 an hour and a 2.5% wage increase hourly is only about $750 a year. I'm here tonight to ask for your support for our custodians and by demanding that ABM Janitorial provide a fair and living wage increase to keep up with the cost of living, with good pay raises, keeping our medical insurance, stop bullying and harassing, and provide a cool, workable environment during the summer months. We want our custodians to continue to serve the district. We deserve, we deserve respect in our workplace and it starts with a union contract. We want our custodians to stay and go with the district and not leave for better wages or better benefits. We want to be treated with respect and we ask you, Evergreen School Board, please send a letter to ABM. Will support us, that you care about your custodians because we care about our schools.
Hey, Terry, wait, wait, Terry. Terry, I have a question for you. You mentioned something about bullying and harassing, can, without getting too.
What, to the third floor of a school building, it's like 120 degrees.
Okay. All right, I just, I just kind of wanted to get an idea of what you were talking about. Okay. The bullying and harassing. You could, if you, if you could give us an explanation, send it over to the board so we have it in writing. That would be great. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Amanda, is it Beck, Brick, Breck? He's on, she's virtual, so she's.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Amanda.
I am here before you today representing the concerned parents in the Evergreen School District. Over this past year, parents and students have faced many unforeseen challenges regarding education. Some of these challenges include, but are not limited to, finding adequate childcare, assisting with remote learning, keeping students' education up to par, and maintaining their mental well-being. While I believe we are all in agreement of wanting to return to normalcy, there are now forcing challenges that should be addressed ahead of this upcoming school year. Recent statements from the Governor's Office, OSPI, and Washington Department of Health all point towards students continuing to wear masks for the 2021, 2022 school year. While opinions differ, there are clear and concise facts that prove this to not be in the best interest of the students. After speaking to members of the community, I have two questions for you today. The first question I have for you is, do you agree with the continuation of masks being worn by students in school? As a follow-up to that question, if the board does not agree with masking students five days a week, will you be advocating to these associations on their behalf? And my second question is, will you be providing a survey to allow families input on this matter? I will be following up by email with the questions to allow you a chance to show the community where the school board stands on this issue. I ask that you take a public stance no later than August 10th to allow parents adequate time to pursue their options. We all want what is best for the students and transparency will allow parents to make decisions based on the needs of their children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just so that we'll answer, we can answer that question more thoroughly because during board or during public comment, we can't really get engaged in conversation because it hasn't been announced, the topics. But I can tell you that we are committed to following what the state laws are as it pertains to mask wearing. And that's where we, that's kind of where we are, that we're obligated by law to do that, so. Okay, up, thank you, Amanda. Next up, we have Rafael Perez.
Good evening.
Hi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Justice, okay.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Well, thank you. This is my second time here and I, hopefully it won't be my last time participating here as well. So, good evening, everybody. I'm here to discuss what I thought was going to be a topic that I thought was going to be discussed tonight, which is that Equity Workshop that was on the agenda, I guess, a couple of weeks back. Several board members attended an Equity Workshop and I was interested to hear how many board members actually attended. And I didn't see that represented or shown in the minutes or any kind of information. My concern with that is that when there are more than three board members present, then it is a forum and it is an official meeting. So I did think that with it being adopted in tonight's minutes, that there would be at least a little more information on that, so I hope that comes in the future. To that, my, my main concern is with the equity or the inclusion training that's going to be going on in professional development. What can you tell us in advance about this training that's going to be offered to the staff per the superintendent's statement on equity and diversity and inclusion? I, I don't typically agree with that kind of information, but I would like to see it first before we start talking about its merits or what needs to be changed or how it can be adopted within the school system. We, another question I have is, will parents be able to see the curriculum before it's distributed to the students? And if there are workshops for professional development, can a private citizen pay the fee to sit in on these sessions as well? Because maybe there are learning opportunities for us in the community. We'd really like to be involved with that. Also that, you know, with that workshop, it, it's really, when I went in to look at it, there's a lot of marketing firms. There's public schools, marketing, and public relations firms that are in there. And one of the terms that came up by Jay Marie Reisch, which is an ideal consultant for PR schools and support, said that there is a new environment called VUCA, which is volatility, uncertainty, complexity, and ambiguity. And whatever I could find on this statement, it did not really talk about what the training would be, but a way to deflect questions on that training. So my concern is that you're not going there to learn how to implement a process or an education system regarding equity or diversity, but how to control parents' questions. but how to control parents' questions on that. And I have a real issue with that. You know, and I would really like to see VUCA used by the school board. And we saw this last time we were here back in, I believe I was back here in May talking about masks and getting school kids back into school at the time. VUCA really should stand for vision, understanding, courage and adaptability. And that's what we want from our school board. In the fall, the kids should go back without masks. There's plenty of science on that. We can all agree on that and there's plenty of data. And then we're back to my topic on equality and equity training. There's more things that the kids need right now than this kind of training the teachers need right now. They need to help these kids adjust and learn. Um, and with that, I can see my time is up, but I will say that no one is born hating another person because of the color of their skin or his background or his religion. People must be, must learn to hate. And if they can learn to hate, they can be taught to love for love comes more naturally to the human heart than a pup, then it's opposite. That was from Nelson Mandela.
I agree with you. We all do. Thank you so much for being here. I'll look forward to seeing you again.
I will be back.
Okay. All right. Next up is Adam Moore. Hi, Adam.
Taking my comments. Appreciate that. My name is Adam Moore and I have a nine-year-old that's attending in the Evergreen School District. And I want to address the board regarding face mask mandate for this coming fall. Um, I feel my opinions are shared by the majority, but can't say that for sure unless we have a survey. And I think that would be something that would be very beneficial is to send out a survey and just see where your constituents are at. Um, I, I hear it echoed many times and you just had the same response to Amanda Breck. Um, that you're going to follow state law regardless, and that's obviously what you have to do. But what you do have the power to do is to write letters, to lobby, to make the constituents' voices that you represent known to the people that are coming up with these orders, right? They're really not laws. It's a executive order. Okay. So there's something you can do there. To that, to that point, I believe face masks are unnecessary given the availability of vaccines for adults and that school-aged children are not really adversely, I shouldn't say adversely, but critically affected by this illness. So we've had almost ten thousand documented cases in Clark County in the age group is between zero and twenty-nine years old with zero deaths. And certainly we've heard stories of complications and things, but if you dig into those in that age group, there's always an underlying condition and it's a matter of testing somebody, testing a small child coming into a hospital and they happen to have COVID. Um, often the argument for face masks on children is something like better safe than sorry. Um, or even if it's a small inconvenience, it's, it's worth it if it stops one illness. But what's often overlooked is something educators, especially early childhood educators know well, and that's how important face-to-face contact is with the developing child, especially smaller children. So important in fact that we have psychological problems, disorders that are diagnosed based on a lack of facial recognition or producing particular facial recognition or, or the expressions that are appropriate for a particular emotion. So it's not without risk. Set aside the fact that they're super uncomfortable, there is potentially some very critical learning that's going to be lost. If we continue to do the, uh, require the face mask and to add insult to injury, the students that are most likely to be affected by this loss of facial scene of face are going to be the demographic that's the last to be vaccinated, right? So we've only approved down to twelve years old. So I just ask that the board please send out a survey, find out where your constituents are at and do what you can to lobby the state and hopefully get that removed by the start of fall. Thank you.
Next up, we have Henry Harvard. Okay. Uh, then next we have Rick Peterson, please.
Peterson, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I want to share a response that I sent. It was on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty of an email sent by Evergreen Public Schools. It says Evergreen Public Schools adds new focus on equity. So my concern is equity, how it's defined. And I'm just going to read the email that I sent. That would be, but I guess over a year ago, still appropriate to today and I'll, it'll address a little bit of who I am as well. The dear board of directors, I would like to respond to the email below regarding equity being introduced to Evergreen Public Schools' education strategy. I have two daughters who are students at Union High School. So this email is of great interest to me. On the surface, equity is a term that seems quite innocuous, but the meaning as it relates to implementation is my concern. Undoubtedly, the email from Superintendent Mike Morino has been sent as a result of the current unrest in our nation. Remember, this was about a year ago. A lot of activity happening. These events have resulted in a reevaluation and introspection by most of us regarding how we view one another. I think all of us have probably done some real soul searching along those lines with what has taken place as a result of Floyd and the corresponding events. So I'll read that again. These events have resulted in a reevaluation, reevaluation and introspection by most of us regarding how we view one another. Equal treatment for all races needs to be a priority in our school system. In reality, it needs to be a priority in each of us individually as we seek to interact with one another with respect and ruthlessly stamp prejudice from our own hearts. Of course, to use terminology similar to the current narrative, all black lives matter. I fear however, that this policy change is motivated in response to the political movement known as Black Lives Matter. Policies being put into place as a result of pressure applied to our society by an admittedly Marxist organization is of great concern to me. Behind the BLM agenda is a revisionist history that teaches our children America is not worth saving. That is patently false. Sixteen nineteen is a common theme of the protests, riots and riots referring to a curriculum hostile to America as traditionally taught. The United States is unique, not in our checkered past of slavery, which we have in common with most every nation on the planet, but that we have forcefully rejected it. Thankfully, thankfully, we are progressing as a nation, rejecting institutions and shameful treatment of others as we have grown over the two and a half centuries of our existence. This is, there is still much to accomplish. Now, while I support peaceful protests to move us further in that pursuit, I am very much opposed to the hatred and vitriol directed toward law enforcement. It's stunning to watch white men and women spew obscenities toward black officers. That is not acceptable. Hatred directed at fellow citizens has no chance to solve racism. That tact will get us nowhere. In addition, bowing to the BLM political agenda will regard, with regard to law enforcement will, in my opinion, have catastrophic fallout. I trust that equity as proposed by the Evergreen School District does not include less law enforcement in our schools. As a parent, my goal is to raise my children to be good citizens. I believe the Evergreen School District has the same goal. Every parent knows we are in a process of training our children to do the right thing. That is deposited into them through consistent effort. It does not come naturally for any of us. We learn to be good. We learn to do the right thing. Enforcement is a part of that long-term solution. Just the presence of those who represent enforcement motivates us toward good behavior. Our students need police officers in our schools. I touched on a few of my concerns about what equity means in our education system. I'll leave it there. I look forward to your response and would appreciate the opportunity to be a part of your plans moving forward. Respectfully, Rick Peterson.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, that is the last of the, of folks that were signed up to speak tonight. Our next order of business is board comments. Do I have any comments by the board that we'd like to?
Oh, I just have to look my calendar. Go ahead.
I guess I would just say a few things because over the last several weeks, you know, we've been hearing a lot. And I don't really want to address like the things that we've heard, but just from my own comments, you know, we've been hearing a lot about things that are changing in guidance and we're well aware of, you know, what we've heard in the community. And I think Victoria said several, I don't know if it was a couple of meetings ago, but she said for every time we get an email, it says in the community. Several others that are uh, maybe complete opposite. So we have to weigh all of that, but we also, you know, we do listen and we do have our own opinions and we have our own concerns. And we're always trying to navigate this and figure it out. So, you know, don't think that we're just sitting back idle and not trying to, to do best for our students as they absolutely are.
There is, I actually had some meetings between graduation and so forth that I thought would be prudent to share with you. Is that on the legislative committee side, I wrote in an email to my and Uvic that, so I'm telling the others here. The Legislative Committee decided to continue work on the comprehensive student safety positions that the association has in order to consolidate them into something that acknowledges the advances in later session. Well, it makes it possible for somebody to prioritize student safety higher without having to choose between two similarly worded positions or three. That work is ongoing and it would have been one of the things that I wanted to workshop with us tonight. But the meeting to finalize that isn't happening for two weeks, so I have to delay it till August. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the Community Action Advisory Board meeting where Council for the Homeless presented the point in time report and we had a good discussion about the circumstance of homelessness and how it compares to how we in the district measure. And even though, and I think there are some opportunities actually to kind of synchronize how they're measuring things with how we have to measure things and better picture of the community. On my mind in any case, uh, to try and continue cultivating that so that get the most accurate picture for us. So, Helen Green of the district is also. And yeah, the rest of it is for the short workshop we have scheduled later on and tonight, which and looking forward to August's work.
Um, I just, did you have anything, Rachel? Okay, um, the only thing I have, I, well, there's a couple of things, I guess. Um, first, we are going to have myself and Julie board reps on our strategic planning committee. However, how the whole board will be as we roll this out, we have our public meetings and public facing things, um, will involve the whole board. We will be discussing of this all to look like at the board workshops, but just so you know. And then, um, Rachel and Jenny will be the ones waste project and obviously you're our legislative group. So that's kind of where things are shaping out right now as we move into on that. And then, um, I think I, I just feel a burning need to just, I know we have people when we talk about equity, I've agreed with just about everything anybody has said about it, you know, it, right, it, kids are not born to hate. It taught to hate. Unfortunately, sometimes in our schools, our our kids, they're just a microcosm of what's happening out in the community. So we do feel like it's important for us, our children to be other, to learn about each other and to respect the differences, not to ignore the differences. I think that's one thing I, I'd like to share just personally. And I've had some questions from people wanting to know if we're teaching critical race theory. We don't. It's a theory that's done at college level. That's not what we're teaching. That particular. So just in case there's any inquiry minds, I just wanted to let you know. And as we roll out more of our equity work, we will be inviting parents to participate in those conversations because it's going to be all of us to do the right thing. So, um, that's something that everybody can be on the lookout and will be pretty obvious about when that's happening and, and what's going to happen. Um, so that's all I had. Unless somebody else has anything.
Another thing, um, when we talk about our equity work too, and it didn't just happen a year ago when events in the, in the, you know, in the United States and the turmoil that was happening. We've been doing this work and Victoria's been on the board a long time and I've been on the board a while. And since I, my start, this equity initiative has started, you know, what, a decade ago, maybe even longer than that. But it was really about, you know, making sure that our kids across the district, no matter where they lived, had the same supports and services and it's evolved over the years. And, um, we just really want what's best for every kid, no matter where they're at in the district and who they are. And like Victoria said, kindness. We just want our kids to be kind to each other and that's it.
Artful agreement with what you just said. I, I could probably go on for hours, but let's, let's not.
Okay. So next up on the agenda is our future agenda items. Is there anything in addition to what we already have that anybody would like to have us consider for agenda items at this? Always bring it up during our.
Have the proposed equity policy works retreat, right?
Yeah. That we want to get up and go up and onward. At that policy so that.
I agree with Rob. We need to get that done.
That way people can be very clear of our position on it. Alrighty. Now the board will go into recess where we'll sign all of our legal documents. Um, we will reconvene when that's finished to a board workshop where we will be discussing some legislative updates that Rob will bring forward. And then we will go into injurbin as soon as that's finished. So tonight's a short one. Um, but we really appreciate everybody who's attended tonight and I will go ahead and call this meeting in recess. Okay, we're back in session and I'm going to turn things over to Director Perkins so he can talk about some legislative.
I'm looking for, if you remember, if you, like Julie and I were at the last in-person legislative assembly, I think that was the last legislative assembly before they went general assembly. Um, that there were safety positions for comprehensive school safety and safety positions for gun violence and safety positions for student safety was actually led by Lakeisha Phillips, if you met Lakeisha. And I worked on a student-centered safety, which we were able to actually base on our, off of our results policy language and their informed language for that. And it had a big bullet list on it. Each And it had a big bullet list on it. Each of these had this great big bullet list of things that went on to, you know, the kinds of things that mean safety. It's like parents will be notified, students will experience safety, it will be equitable and that sort of thing. Well, they passed the SRO reform bills, which require training of all security staff. Elf was an idea that came out of legislative committee. Notions and other places that if SROs need to be trained in trauma-informed responses and, and so well, we got that law passed and it actually knocked most of the bullet points out of the way. So that we don't need to continue to advocate for that as much as we need to continue to advocate for enough state funding to bring the people in the training in to provide trauma-informed restorative kinds of placements for discipline that we need in order to keep kids engaged, right? And
What happens, what happens if we're there, you're in a situation like we are here where the police department deputies don't have the funds to fund that or the manpower.
Well, that's
That'll hold another ballgame.
That was this 45 minutes of one of the conversations that I had when we were developing this. Opening. And what came out of that, after that conversation were the please wait, sign in, type in your email address.
But the problem is they don't have the manpower. So they're already having a challenge filling positions. And so we'd still have, we'd be able to call the police, obviously if an incident's happening at the school and they will come. But as far as having somebody designated to be there all the time. And the county.
State Patrol has a different role. And they, I guess they stick to state highways and, and protecting governor, another government official. So this is the, this is the proposed language or comprehensive safety. This says WAZA shall initiate and support legislation to increase and ensure student experience of physical, social and emotional safety. Centering student voice in policy development, providing appropriate parent notification, enforcing student safety requirements and creating accountability measures for all staff and volunteers as determined by district leadership and consultation with community. Legislation should include funding for districts to hire and train safety and security staff as defined under RCW 28A 32124. If the revised SRO. In support of locally relevant and culturally responsible all hazards approaches for planning and managing student crises. Our goal there was to align it with the WAZA permanent position that the board approved around safety. I think that was just last year. Uh, but also to take those bullets and, you know, always have that argument for underneath. Sort of celebrate the accomplishments of our advocacy in term. Make something aspirational that will let the WAZA advocates go in and sign in, yes. But other for more bills because people are more interested in whether we support something. What I, what I wonder if we could do. The ones this makes its way past the legislative mission process and the assembly in Spokane in September is, could we take that position? Look, my computer just switched. Could we take that position in any of the other high, highly prioritized positions and adopt them as positions of the board for legislative? I think that would clarify um, what Melissa Gomboski has from the board and also maybe even a line. Hence that people have from the business of like WAZA, WAZA. Evergreen should be saying the same thing, no matter which employee in Evergreen or contractor never been representing us and
Should all be on the same page.
That I think that still leaves her the latitude to spend political coin the way that is wise. Many years we had Marsha, and she knew Evergreen cold. Lot of our values are becoming part of the WAZA positions now. I want us to think about, because we'll prioritize the positions and then a prioritization list will come out from WAZA saying this is how the association. Look at the top 20 and decide whether or not those are also our positions. Aso. And Marissa and Melissa can march together.
So you want us to have our own prioritization sheet, not just necessarily take what our top 20 is and then send us off to the general assembly and then first told you, but we want it, once we come up with our top, then we want to have our own.
Well, I'm hoping we can consider whether or not WAZA's consensus positions, their top 20 are the same as ours. Adopt them vote in a meeting. Or it has adopted these priorities. And if possible, we have to consider that because there might be one or two positions that
That we don't.
Right.
And because personally, I feel like I don't take my marching orders from WAZA.
Right.
Oh, and sometimes because districts, oh, different. Um, that sometimes there's things that are put might be good for us and our kids. Long as we're looking at it through the lens of what we need as a district.
Right. Um, and we don't have to do it in any way. I agree with you. Have to be informed by the community. There's who and see. That's that, is that a lot, that'll add weight to the things. The other thing that I think would add weight to the legislative process is something that that I thought it'd be ready for this cycle, but it isn't. But it's worth starting talk about because we have Mike and because Mike is, is so good with the finances, right? And if we're coming ever a bill gets a fiscal note for the costing. SPI is the agency who talks about that. So often you see, OSPI has no mechanism for determining local district costs. They could have asked. So wouldn't it be nice? OASDA and other letter groups were to advocate for a mechanism to supply that information. It's there. OFM has a database that people have access to in those departments. Well, if you took the top 20 biggest school districts, you're not adding that many users. And you're getting sharp fiscal officers who can enter the data and include the costs through a mechanism. But I'm not necessarily sure that the way that I think of it is necessarily the wisest way to go about it. So it's going to take some time, I think, to I'll get some legislators on board and, and guess something to do.
Sometimes I think that if they automatically either as they're envisioning it to be or they'll say yes, but they pass on the expense to down the road to districts at without any thought to how that impacts our budgets.
That was driven by the lead and water arguments from two sessions ago.
Yeah.
That was a really passionate debate and WAZA couldn't support what was proposed out work on the positions without people knowing what the costs were. And so it took an extra year to get a lead and water legislation passed.
Yeah.
Help us out with all of them. I just think of it as one great big hole in the information, right? Data about this or that thing in individual districts and all the data crunching that I'm, I've done about it using the reports that we can use. It's kind of answers to this. Hard to get their lens focused on the finances the way that improve it. Uh, has some operational ideas and
Can I, can I also add that Rob's talked, yeah, I'm here, I'm listening. Hi, the, the, you know, you talk about Melissa, I, I think about, and Rob also mentioned Marcia. You know, you have the WAZA positions, they have, you see how they match up with Evergreen's positions, but I think it would be, it would be helpful if we had Melissa come, you know, either come to a board meeting or call into a board meeting and kind of provide kind of her perspective also and hear directly from you what those priorities are so that when she's in Olympia, having the opportunity to lobby and share that information, she knows, you know, what are the things? I mean, there's always certain things that, that, that the districts kind of get behind on the funding side, but these policy things. Um, I, I think, I think it would be helpful if Melissa heard directly from you on the areas that you are the most interested in and if they align and how we can work together and whether we need to go it alone. Um, and I feel like we, we did more of that when Marcia was around.
I was going to say, I remember when Marcia used to come and come to our board workshops on that and felt to ask her lots of in-depth questions about potential legislation that was coming down. And it was really helpful.
Because I don't even think that all of us, well, I've met her, but
Yeah, I feel like the only time you've maybe met her is if, if she had met you in Olympia, if you were in Olympia testifying or there was a meeting in Olympia. I mean, I think she would be willing to come down if we picked a meeting in the fall and just kind of be in person and have a conversation directly. And it's always nice to hear from her or, or you maybe have seen her like at the ESD forum that they do in the fall, but I think it'd be good for her to come and have an opportunity to hear directly from all of you. Uh, and then she can share kind of this is what she's hearing in, from the perspective of, of her contacts within the legislature and other lobbyists. I think that would be helpful personally.
I like that idea. Yep. That's good.
That's, yeah, I mean, if we, if we did that, she would have a document or a vote or something to priorities. And our priorities can't be all that much different from Vancouver.
They aren't usually, but I think it'd be a good idea for you, for her to hear directly from the board in terms of those, you know, because a lot of times when the superintendents, well, particularly the last several years, because of the last few years, you know, because they've been so much about funding. They haven't been as much from her, from her level. Uh, or they're so focused on one thing or two things. Well, we really can't do it. Uh, but it's always helpful for her to be aware, even if it's not this session, she's setting up for the next session.
Yep.
And Gail and Sue, I'm happy I woke you up.
They've been here bright eyed and bushy tailed the whole time.
I, I know that they have. I just got a message saying I might've woke one of them up.
I've been talking to them. I didn't even notice you hadn't left. Should we do something like crash a guitar over a table or some, you know, just oh, okay.
Onto the new place.
Oh, no, not, yeah, okay. I get a different picture. Um, that is that, and then the Community Action Advisory stuff. That's not really a legislative up here. Bill synergies. Council for the homeless had school data as well, which is you can share given purpose. Well, as the data that they gather, uh, there's, there's a, there's potential there for a picture. Nobody really has her. So that's on my mind and it's sort of been developed. We'll see how it shakes out. That committee doesn't need that often. That is, that is it. Everything else is about to dig into the technical details after the ledge committee.
And I really quickly update you that we did have one meeting. I, we've, you know, Rob and I think Julie kind of went through WAZA on this effort to change the transportation funding formula. Um, and we've been working Vancouver, Evergreen, ESD 112 with a consultant on uh, coming up with a formula that might be a replacement for the Stars formula that we have. Um, we met with him, Sean Lewis is his name. And he's worked in the state for years and had various jobs. Uh, and he brought forward like three different proposals for potential new funding formulas that would make things more simple and understandable and predictable in terms of transportation, probably not completely fully fund, but come closer to fully funding transportation. From that, uh, there is going to be a survey sent out, I think to maybe 75 districts to try to gather some input. Um, that then ultimately is formulated into a final proposal that would be brought forward uh, through Monica and other legislators, I believe, um, in January. So we continue to move forward in that process. Um, he received information from the, the data from OSPI so he could kind of work on the updated formula and and honestly, it's, it's basically a formula that looks at, um, how many kids do you transport? Uh, and how many miles do you drive? And you get so much per kid and so much per mile, very simple. Um, but gets us closer to fully funding and understandable. So uh, that's positive. Just wanted to share that real quick. We'll continue to update you throughout the fall on that.
I, I appreciate that because I'd forgotten to say that was the Legislative Committee passed the position proposal out with due pass. Uh, and it was completely uncontroversial. And I must do pass.
I think everybody wants to be great.
Yeah. So I don't anticipate any controversy about it in the general assembly and so Monica is going to have WAZA behind for work on that bill. Yep.
Oh. We'll actually be going, leaving while it's still light outside.
I might, I mean.
All right.
I think, I think Target's open, is New Target still open?
Okay, I'll go ahead and we are
Bye, Mike.
Bye, Mike. Have fun.
Goodbye. Thank you. Appreciate it. See ya.